Thank you, Kristi.
All right, so today we're here for our November third, twenty twenty five audit committee meeting. We have a pretty full agenda, but I expect to finish in time for four meetings. First up on our agenda, we have our minutes from the October sixth committee meeting. They were included in the packet of materials during this evening's meeting and also available online. I'm going to skip ahead to our claims auditor report so that we can let you go. We tend to stay for our whole meeting. I forget your name. I know you've been here before.
I'm Alan.
Oh, so this is Alan, our page one five.
That's what I meant. I meant external audit.
I meant Alan. That's it. I couldn't remember your name.
Okay.
Alan from the Bonneville Group.
From Bonneville, yeah.
It's easier to join us. I meant external audit, not claims auditor. But yeah, you're welcome to take a podium if you'd like.
Okay. Can I just sit here and do this? Sure, I can.
Yeah.
Because I need to look at my at my papers as well. Just introduce myself to everybody. My name is Ellen Walther, partner with the Bonneville Group. We are the school district's external auditors at completing our draft audit for the year ended June thirty two thousand and five. Colleen passed around six copies paper, so I think some of you were sharing. And I think your reports were emailed on Friday. So hopefully you had maybe a little bit of a chance to review them. I'll go through things at a relatively high level, but I'll get you up there in time. What's important throughout the committee, feel free to ask ten questions that you would like us to go through. Before I get started, just like to give a big thank you, Kristi and Colleen, for all their assistance. And helping us to get the audit done, who's my Rebecca, who's the staff, what he's provided to us. Big help having this started, so a little bit of a head left to get it done. But what we are done. So the first report, there's four, there's four reports that we're handing out. The first report that I need to go through briefly is required communications letter. Which if you have it in front of you, it actually has entitled, it says required communications, four page staple document. And again, I'll just hit on the highlights. If you do have questions, feel free to interrupt me. Important information here is right in the middle of the first page, under qualitative aspects of accounting practices. During two thousand twenty five, the school district adopted GADP one oh one compensated expenses. GADP is a governmental accounting standard for that is the body that sets the rules that all governments have to follow. During two thousand twenty five, the school district was required to implement GADP one oh one with regard to compensated expenses. We worked with Colleen and Kristi to do that. There was a change to the financial statement, just to recognize the full amount of compensated expenses that the school district owes to its employees. It's really just a reporting issue. The amount that gets paid out to your employees is as per your contracts. You compensate after GADP one oh one, how to report it. And the reporting is only in the government-wide financial statements to the effect of one level financial statements. At the bottom of page, the first page, significant estimates affecting the financial statements. You think of the financial statements as numbers. You think of the numbers as exact. That's kind of how it is with your ours, it's basically estimates. Estimates primarily affects the government-wide financial statements. Depreciation is based upon estimated useful lives, your abilities and equipment. Other post employment benefits is based upon an actuarial estimate of the amount that is owed to your retirees and your employees, your assumed income retirees. Compensated expenses based upon cumulative debalances, the inheritance. But then on the next page, the net asset viability deferred outflows, deferred inflows, which passes through from the school district's participation into New York State plans, the CRS and ERS. Our role with regard to estimates is to evaluate them and determine if they are reasonable with financial statements. Oh, we did that. We knew that they are. Difficulties in performing the audit, no real significant difficulties. You know, GADP one oh one was a bit of a heavy left. Corrected misstatements, there were a number of adjustments which are listed in section A. We are required to disclose those. Though the number of adjustments this year also added to internal control binding, which we'll talk about definitely finding. And then binding with regard to the required communications, disagreement with management. You add none. If you had any disagreements with management, you would be required to disclose that to you. This agreement with management would be potentially disagreeing with how GADP one oh one, for example, how we implement a accounting standard. The next report I'd like to go through is the school district financial statements. Again, if you have that in front of you, you can use the large bound with a binder clip. These are so big documents. We take a look at the table of contents. I'll just walk through what is in the report and then I'll get upon, again, what I think are the highlights for the audit committee. Beginning on page one is our auditor's report. Beginning on page four is the management's discussion and analysis. Pages four through twenty two, I'm sorry, fourteen through twenty two are the financial statements. And notice the financial statements. Beginning on page fifty two is required supplementary information. That's required by GADP. Supplementary information begins on page fifty seven. That is required. Although that's the combined balance sheet in sacred regulars and expenditures. Other information begins on page fifty nine. That is required by the state education department. And then finally, on the second page, the table of contents to require the report or auditing standards begins on page sixty two. If you go all the way to the last page of the report, page sixty four, there's a summary of auditor's results. So in a nutshell, this is the results of the audit for the year. The type of audit report that we will be issuing is unmodified. That is the highest level of assurance you can give on your financial statements. There is a material weakness, which we'll talk about at the end, at the end of discussion. No significant deficiencies and no instances of non-compliance. So if you flip all the way back to page one, we'll take a look at the opinion, which is the second paragraph at the top of the page, which I will paraphrase. In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly. The financial position of Florisville Central School District as of June thirty of two thousand twenty five. Again, that is what we, as auditors, call an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance you can give on your financial statements. And that is the opinion of all the users of the financial statements, the state corporate office, state education department, bond rating, bond rating agencies who will look. Pages four through thirteen is the management's discussion and analysis. I'm going to skip over that in its entirety. I would suggest if you're not going to read the entire sixty page plus document, you'll be the management's discussion analysis. That is written in relatively lay-in terms, comparative to the prior year, and gives good information. So let's go to page fourteen, which is the statement of net position. So the school district, as with all local governments, is required to present two, two sets of financial statements. Government-wide financial statements and fund-level financial statements. The difference at a thirty thousand foot level is the government-wide financial statements are basically all of the funds of the school district added together, plus your long-term assets, minus your long-term liabilities, all accounted for using a plural method of accounting, which means you recognize assets regardless of when you either consume them via depreciation or turn them into cash, and you recognize liabilities regardless of when you made a lot of cash. Whereas the fund-level financial statements, you use the modified plural method of accounting, which is the same method of accounting that you use for your budget. And at that level, you take most of one year of your finance. So two required financial statements. Two significantly different pictures of the school district's finances. So back to page fourteen, the statement of net position. If you go all the way to the bottom of the page, you can see your net position is a deficit of sixty-two million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end of the year. And that is primarily because the school district is required to recognize the entire amount of this other post employment benefits liability, which if you look at the long-term portion, is almost seventy million dollars there. Again, that the other post employment benefits liability is an actuarial estimate of the amount that the school district owes to retirees and employees who assume income retirees for post employment benefits other than pensions. Page fifteen is the reciprocal, the sacred activities is reciprocal of the statement of net position. Page sixteen, I think is probably a little more relevant to the audit committee. Page sixteen is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. Balance sheet is a snapshot of the school district's financial position as of, as of the point in time, as of June thirty of two thousand twenty five. The funds, show across the top, the general funds is your primary operating fund. That is the point where we talk about the budget, we talk about the general funds. Capital projects fund is your other major funds. And then your non-major funds are all combined. There is a combining schedule on page fifty seven. Your non-major funds, your school lunch fund, your special miscellaneous fund, your special aid funds and your debt service. The highlights here on the balance sheet, your total general funds, fund balance, right toward the very bottom of the page. Your total fund balance was eight million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which almost six and a half million was restricted for various purposes. A million three eighty-four is assigned of that assigned amount. One million, one eighty, seven fifty-three was appropriated for subsequent your expenditures that is the amount that was used to balance in two thousand twenty six. And then the remaining unsigned balance of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, that's the amount that is subject to the New York State corporate limitation. There's a capulation at page fifty-nine, and it capulates at one point five percent. As we're within the New York State's limitation. The only other comment here on the, on the balance sheet, if you look at the capital projects fund, the capital projects fund is showing a fund deficit of five million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. That should not be a concern of the committee because if you look, right in the smack dab in the middle of page, find anticipation, no tax skating, or twelve million, five hundred thousand dollars to support a loan to the county as those find extension or to redeem by the general fund or converted into long-term debt, you'll recognize that. Okay, so that, that deficit is tiny. As I said too, on page fifty-seven, there is a schedule of the non-major funds, combining balance. Let's skip to page eighteen, which is the statement of revenue, expenses and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. Let's ignore the general funds. We'll look at the general fund versus the budget. It's the same information, but it'll be a little more meaningful if you do personal budget. And again, the only comments here, capital projects fund, pretty significant amount of activity this year. You spent nearly nine million dollars. There is a schedule on page sixty with details out to various projects that the district has going on. And again, on page fifty-eight, there is a combining schedule of the non-major funds. Let's skip to page, I think it's fifty-two. Yes, page fifty-two is the budget versus actual schedule for the general fund. Again, the general fund being the only one for which there is a formally adopted budget. The highlights here on page fifty-two, your total budgeted revenue for the year was thirty million, six hundred and twenty thousand. Actual revenue was thirty million, five hundred, or thirty-one million, five hundred. So you had a net favorable variance of eight hundred and eighty thousand. On page fifty-three, four lines up to the bottom, your total expenditures for the year budgeted were thirty-four million, seven forty-one. Your actual expenditures were thirty-two million, four thirty-four. You had encumbrances of two hundred and three thousand. Encumbrances are budgetary carryovers to something here that rolls over into the twenty-six budget. So you had a net favorable expenditure variance of two point one billion. So overall, is the net, is the next, next line, you would budget to use four point one billion of your fund balance. You actually used nine thirty-three net of the encumbrances of two hundred and three thousand. You had two million ninety-four payable for the period here. Let's skip, let's go all the way to the very last page. And we'll talk about the material weakness that we had, which can be found in that on page sixty-four. So in a nutshell, the reason that we have the material weaknesses here was, was primarily the sheer number of audit adjustments that we had, also adjustments as we began audit. So the audit was somewhat of a unique target until we got everything nailed down. You know, in the past, it hasn't been that way. I think it was a primary turnover. Going forward, going to test, make sure that everything is closed, all the adjustments are reported before we come. As, as your auditors next year, we will, which one of our responsibilities, follow up on these. So hopefully next year, while we're saying we hear this, we're back to usual. Any questions on the financial statements? I went pretty quickly, but I think I hit on highlights.
Yeah, I think you go with it.
Well, good, okay.
Did some of the language change? Like the basis broken in this language and things, did there changes there? It just reads a little differently.
It should, it changed a few years ago, but it should be basically the same as last year. It's gotten very lengthy. Therefore, he's, when I was in college, it was three paragraphs. So it's like four pages, but the words should be the same, similar. Any other questions on the, on the financial statements? The other financial report that we have is extra classroom activities. The extra classroom reports are reported on our past cases, on the student books. The important information here is on, on, on page one. We give an unmodified opinion on the past cases. And then on page four, you can see a schedule of the activity rolled up. And then finally, management letter, reissue management letter, primarily with regard to extra classroom findings. Just some, they, I thought they were relatively minor findings with regards to documentation of receipts, documentation, distortions. Some clubs, they had no activity, that kind of thing. But otherwise, unless there's any questions, that's the extended line.
I had a question on the elementary school funds. Do you know that there were four elementary school accounts that should not be accounted for here? Where, where should they be accounted for?
It's probably, they're not so, extra classroom funds are supposed to be for middle school, sixth grade up in here. Sixth grade up. Elementary schools are not supposed to have it. If they have something, I guess somewhere in the business office, take care of it. Because we're really trying not to have these elementary school teachers or whomever at preschool running a fund on their desks. So it's probably better that it's recorded here than that, or it shouldn't be. It's not technically an extra classroom fund.
We run it through an extra classroom fund because we don't want to run it through the building.
Yeah, it's technically not an extra classroom fund. You're kind of, exactly, which when you're a law teacher, that's hard place.
But we could run it out of the business office.
It's like Schrodinger's cat. It's like Schrodinger's cat. It's, is it a fund or is it not a fund? And you don't have to worry about it.
So that's a curricular in nature, it's kind of supposed to be a student tracker. Right. Which elementary school, you can't do that. So I think we did it as, our school is a favorite to elementary school. So that we're kind of monitoring those funds where we house them and how they're accounted for. Maybe we put them in a separate little fund.
Could a high school student have really come to Schrodinger's?
Why couldn't they, don't, doesn't student council have a tracker?
Do they, why?
I think student council and those groups have.
Some do, some do.
Student council. But they're.
Why aren't they allowed to? It's just the two young?
Yeah.
Do you have student council, elementary school?
So is this a, is this a state or what is the regular target reason?
A state.
So this isn't anything that we're doing, this is a regulation statement in the state.
Exactly. This comes, exactly. This comes from S D, S E D, state of station part. I guess to put it in a little further perspective, I can say, I don't know, sixty, seventy-five percent of our school districts do exactly what we did. Because as kind of, if we come to confusion, there's probably really no better place. But technically, we don't want that.
Yeah, because I don't remember this finding in prior years, extracurricular. Like last year was the first year, and I think forever that we had a, no findings on the extracurricular funds. So I mean, I wasn't surprised to see findings this year because we usually have them. But that kind of caught my attention of like, if we're doing it wrong, then what's the right way? So.
I think we're doing the right, but it's S E D wrong. Let's put it that way.
Yep, okay.
Is that the best way is, I guess is the best way to say it.
Right.
Yeah.
This is a question that we work with friends from, um, but do we look every year at our extracurricular funds to review what's running and what's not?
Yes.
We do. I thought we did.
Anyone else have questions for Alan? Thank you. Thank you for being here. Jared Duro. You're free to go.
Do you need seven o'clock or no?
No, we can review.
You're, you're, you don't need me to present, okay?
No.
Because I saw it on the agenda, so, all right.
I was gonna say, I took, I took notes, so.
All right, so you're gonna do it?
I'll take a crack at it.
All right.
If anyone has questions.
For you what?
To audit committee.
I'll give you my cheat sheet.
Perfect.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll put that freezing.
See you, Larry.
Hi, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Item number three, historical review of revenues and general fund appropriations by function of what has been occurred. So this is a, I think, all that you jumped in the column, but I think the goal here was to try and revive some of the reporting that we had in place when Jim was with us. I think we all found that sort of like, what have we, who we plan to spend, what have we spent, what do we think we're going to spend, report helpful in trying to gauge the state of the district's finances. So we want to try and bring, we get that report or some other report back. Colleen's been looking at that, so all that you can jump in.
So really what I did is, so I looked back five, six years and then reported on what we had set historically from twenty twenty one to current to the budget. Really, this year's budget, as of October, we spent about twenty-six percent of our budget of this year. But up to twenty-four, twenty-five, when you look at the trending, our budget is relatively expensive or relatively the same. You're gonna see circle increases in your, obviously your health insurance rate, through your, through your, sorry, through salaries. Those are the, the major differences when you have increases or if you're doing any special needs that you haven't changed. But historically, you've been pretty much on the same. And if you look at the bottom, I did a post spending increase or decrease over from year to year. So some years, twenty-one, twenty-two, you were less by ten percent. Then on the average, twenty-two, twenty-three, over the prior year, you're spending with nineteen percent. So some of those items would have been changes in your hospital, debt service changes. So those are your, more your operational costs. So there's nothing that was really glaringly different from year to year. As I said, you did a difference, you usually are in your salaries and your benefits, your debt service. Those are your primary drivers in intercountry insurance. And then you can see, I also put over year over year, your revenues and what your spending was in comparison to your revenues. Most years, you came out positive, which led to a nice fund balance. And then some years, your spending was a little bit different. So it's just a matter of, you know, making sure that we're on track for that.
Yeah, I think that's a goal raised for us to be a partner with you and kind of looking at this and trying to plan, like where are we off or where do we think we might essentially have a gap?
You're pretty much, I mean, your spending is pretty much static. Like I said, only get your increase, or not me, your increases within your, usually your CPI or your cost of living, right?
All right, thank you. So that report is the end of the packet. I mean, everybody is having trouble finding this. Do you want to do claims auditor reports next?
Sure. So we have a number of claims reports. The exceptions really are your standard exceptions. You had, however, what we did is spend is obviously in your capital fund, really had a two million dollar warrant. But in comparison to what we spent, so you look at the number of sessions. Some are PT and speech therapy. Those are obviously, those are services you have to provide to your special needs students. Athletics, plus borrowing, that's your standard, you really don't know when, that's what we're going to be spending on it. I mean, we could kind of like it, you know, we can obviously do that. And then everything else, like you have a new transportation building, you know, that higher direction. That again is new expense. know, that higher direction, that again is new expense. So next year, knowing we have a new facility, we've already adapted by adding to a cap code that can afford a transportation facility. So those will be new accounts within the financials that we can now know what transportation operation we've got across moving forward.
So you mentioned you're doing like a P O for athletics. Is that something that is pre-identified or should we be doing that?
If you know, there's your normal operation, your inspections, you should maintenance costs. If you know you're using T V S, traditionally that's what we have done is to make that P O. Even there's gonna be unanticipated inspections or repairs. You don't, every single repair, you can't anticipate a P O for that. This is some something very similar to that. You know you're gonna spend, you look, to me, I usually look at traditional spending, what we've done over the years, and do an average in that place, that P O dating.
Is that, is there a risk? Is there though for lots of oversight? What's that? Is there a risk to having a one view to have lots of oversight?
No, because you E and D, right, we'll sit down with the E and D at the beginning of your facilities and we'll also let them evolve, hey, what do you think you're gonna anticipate based on prior history? And then he'll look at it and then every invoice and every expense is still coming through our office for review. That's that.
I would guess it would be, but I feel like every time you drop one layer.
Yeah.
No, we understand.
Yes, I.
Okay.
I need to apply.
All right, anything else on page one of the reports?
If we all know, um our capital fund, we're doing a recent track. We have a very good process in place to make sure our check is picked up in time for us. So we're we're going to.
All right, next up, draft budget calendar.
We'll have an academic board meeting for everybody to do.
As we've not put out our draft yet, so we.
Oh, okay. So this is budget for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Sure.
Okay. And then um speaking of.
So I can just, you want to do it?
I can do it. I was gonna say, speaking of keeping track of where we're spending more than we anticipated.
So school lunch, um and now it shows a loss and it um is really not a detrimental thing. Um because we did with our advent of, to me, I call it unintended consequences. When you have your advent of free meals, your costs are gonna go up because you are supplying more mouths to the students. So when you look at the amount of participation um that we have, that is um the perfect behind there. Um you'll see how expensive we bought up and how many meals that we were served. But yeah, our loss compared to last year is not as great. So we are making gains. Our reimbursement rate from the state is is higher than it was before for the free meals. So I think that's helping us. But our expenses, if you look at our expenses overall, we were actually a thousand dollars poorer than last year. And when you consider the amount of time that's being spent between the two buildings where the elementary school and their temporary, I think you're doing very well.
Yeah, the other thing I was noticing was like this, this period is from July, right? When we started very few deals, but we still have expenses.
Both were compared to who July did. Yes.
Yeah.
We just started from getting. But if you consider the amount of meals that we're serving and and look at the cost of expenses, we're a hundred sixteen compared to last year, a hundred seventeen, usual value off.
For example, we're using breakfast. Where are you seeing that region?
Uh the breakfast date. Last year, there were um. I don't know, about five hundred breakfast date, about ninety. They probably didn't submit this year.
Oh, I see. Sorry.
Well, not.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah. So when you add our, if we go back to other sales, which are all a card sales, because everybody's getting free meals, they're not buying those extra items now. So that's the other side of it. Your sales and your à la carte sales are now going down because everybody's getting free meals.
So less.
So one of those, I call them ten consequences.
We make a lot of them.
Yeah.
Are kids, because it seems like with, you know, what tends as many breakfasts maybe served in a month, does it seem like maybe some kids are less hungry and less.
I I don't know, but this would be that, but I just wonder if teachers and those some kids are not as hungry um in the morning.
I I think that's, I I think that would be a hard thing to be able to say. I will tell you that we see a lot more kids eating.
Yeah.
Like there's a lot more like satiated children because they're they're lined up. And when you ask, which is great, is this always like this or like extreme? Why wouldn't I get it? That's the answer that I hear over and over and over again. Um sometimes I I've asked kids, I go, they're like, well, no, I eat already, but I like a second breakfast. And other people, you know, that's very common. Yep, you know, but you know, that's very common too. But some kids also say it's easy because they get to wake up early, you know, they wake up early, they get here, and then they know breakfast is here. It it kind of helps with that stress as well. So that's another kind of consequence because it's they know that they're gonna be able to eat soon as they get here. Kind of helps the morning even out a little bit more as well.
Has it impacted the Jabba Hut sales?
No, we no, Jabba Hut is still going to.
Always ready.
So that that coffee shop is booming.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our last item that we have is a review of expense-based aids. This is continuing our, we're trying to like tackle a topic that we don't usually spend much time on, but we want to try and make sure we're all informed of some of these issues.
Yeah, and just before Colin comes into it, we thought it would be a good point of time since we're starting budget conversation, starting moving forward, is that when you talk about expense-based aids, they're really important because it's one of the only ways that you can control revenue for your following years. So it really is what you spend now, you can guarantee revenue for next year. So it's always kind of smart to say, if I'm going to buy X, can I get it from expense-based aid? Because I can at least guarantee that I'm getting revenue in the following year. So for example, if it's BOSI's, and I know I can get it through BOSI's contract, in comparison to not getting it through BOSI's contract, I could spend it, but I'm not gonna give any revenue next year. If I do spend it through BOSI's, I'm gonna guarantee myself at least whatever the refund is, fifty-two percent or sixty-two percent, depending on what the aid is, at least I can get that money back. So it's a way to build up. So it's kind of smart budgeting to be able to use that. So as Colin goes into, I just want to kind of clarify.
If that's what you actually want, if BOSI's is offered.
Yeah, if if you can get it, but I have, I said, if you can get it through BOSI's, for example, a lot of contracts you can. So for example, our cameras, cameras you can get through BOSI's. If you're gonna buy a camera, you can get it through expense-based aids. There are certain things you can.
Yeah.
But yeah, and that's your your list of.
So as Frank just said, he just kind of paraphrased everything I put in.
Well, you're gonna go over.
But you know, I always prefer to, you know, expense-based aids are usually are often referred to spend, yeah, what you spend is what you get in the following year. And how do you get that money in the following year? So similar to what we do on an annual basis, we have our audit. But that audit also gets translated into what we call S E D reporting, which is our annual financials on the S E D group. All those expenses that are reported are what goes into the database for state, and the state generates those aids back to us. So we'll be seeing an output, what we call an output run, probably in the next three months because they'll hit the November database. So though everything that's reported is what we'll get back next year. Each one of those aids, depending on those categories, if you look at your building aid, which is obviously your building project, and your transportation aid through BOSI's aid, excess cost aids, and other, what I refer to as other expense aids, all have to be aid ratios. Those aid ratios are developed based on the district's wealth and their enrollment. The other expense aid base really are the textbooks. Those are assessed value based on what we get back. Here will be ratios, so you can see vary. There's historical history on our expense-based aids and what ratio um the next couple pages. You can see how that fluctuates. Sometimes you take um our income is a lot higher or lower, and that will be adjusted uniformly based on what we call common wealth ratio. But everything that we do, when we do spend, um we do in some form or actually, it's a little bit big that's in the um, still thing remains by state levels or foundation aid, the foundation aid, we'll definitely go over like usually the government base. And this year, that anticipated is pretty flat. So any questions?
Thank you. I think we are concluded.
Evening, everyone. As we said in the announcement, we are going to roll from the previous meeting to this one, go a little bit from the audit committee meeting into the school board meetings. Um we will now move to A one point two, pledge allegiance to the flag and that. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the soul of the good and just strong. All four members are in here. One, Steve Corliver, is with us today. As a whole, we have um the, for the good of the order of discussion, um thank congratulations to the top spending team for their lead win. Um that's lead win. Congratulations for that. And Matt, could you talk to us about the very fun disa meeting that you attended? And could you start with the link? How long is it?
It was only done by.
Starts at four something?
Yeah, four grand. Uh so so just to have a session, this is the. Hello, it's from from the kind of the school board uh gathering on. Um those are just one of the category services which that ISBA is an organization that recommends for passage and that is the most advanced passage. Um it essentially went the way of the of the particular recommendations with the two second that I mentioned was uh also supported by the idea of um proposal to uh produce state-wide lockdown drills from four fifteen uh that didn't fail. As a result, and then it's a lobbying meeting, which is a legislative website, which is a deep lockdown. And reverse, the proposal that was opposed by the proposal that the president. It was a proposal for expanded reorganization rate aid to include regionalization. Straight up the mountain or uh and all of these. And then it did pass by the help of Martin. Uh otherwise, there was some, you know, some very certain vague um issues that we expected to be. And so that was interesting. And segue into the second point that came from that was that after the meeting, it was kind of that, by ISBA, uh indicating that our party, our board does not have um a advocacy liaison, uh whether it's called someone from the board who might be interested in being in local contact or ISBA's priorities. Um that's not something that I designed, um you know, can you believe that I was a delegate, so I'm not interested in that. So I pass that on for anybody that is maybe interested in that. I can't, you know, information that has to be passed that on. Um and unless anybody has questions on the inability of writing before, I just wanted to say another point. Um and I know that it's been mentioned a number of times on parents' square, which I think as an aside, it's a phenomenal action to encourage for communication. Uh but that's a topic of the. The whole movement on district, uh those experience, these very influential at this time, um as indicated in our communication, people should should reach out to you and help them act in their own, useful social workers, those have been, so high school programs, this is in fact, uh the community program. Uh and it's extraordinarily important to be talking to some community level school. Um and it really is a step toward, you know, what I what I aspire should receive of all schools should be are, this is a community level school, whereas when people can pay a much in terms of programs, I think we'd be very happy to do that and offer media. So um.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our turn. Is it anyone who's in a position or must leave that door? And no one has to, it's but it's not a requirement for our board to have one. But if there is any, it's just don't have to do it. The absence of answers. Bring it up next month. Any questions? Thank you for giving that curtains. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
And I'll just add on to what Matt said about the um resources for families to need assistance. Um the advisory council of the school council program, men and women. They are really busy. Um last year, they acted on request to start gathering more data about the services that they're providing. Um so this year, they're really realizing that trying to identify gaps and where they could um need more of our resources. So I think they're doing a great job. Um and the food can trade uh for holiday fact, but to run through um student council as well. Um and and our resources too, if you're considering, we just need a snack or something, it's it's here if anyone needs it. Get social.
All right. Um good. So that's. Of course, we have the opportunity to be heard. We have an opportunity to be a meeting. And then at the end of the meeting, um there's a podium here, someone in color that just already heard putting. Um with that, we move to item three point one. And there are a lot of students here at the Girls' Tennis Team. We uh want to. So we would like to recognize you. And that's all for the talk. Put your hands up.
Thank you to the board and Mr. McCree for inviting our girls varsity tennis team here to be recognized tonight. Just a real brief history um for for a period of time after a long tradition of a successful program, we actually lost girls varsity tennis for a period of time. And through the advocacy of a group of student athletes, um girls tennis was brought back as a varsity sport in two thousand and nineteen. So, you know, I think to be here in two thousand and twenty-five celebrating a championship, I think is a feather, it's a feather in the cap of a lot of people who advocated, recruited, and worked hard to build the program. So a round of applause. Our girls tennis team had an interesting season. We won class C, section two class C the sectional, which is a huge accomplishment. We won class C, section two class CD sectional, which is a huge accomplishment. After we won section two, CD sectionals, we played Scotia, a much larger school, in what's called the section two division two championship, and we lost in that match, but our tennis team was selected to be the at-large bid in regionals, which is the first round of the NISFA championship. So, to go from not having a program in 2019, to be playing on that stage, is, is just very impressive. I'd like to introduce each player and have them come forward for a certificate. First, Liana Malaya. Ashley Evans. Anna Durin. Amira Khan. Azara Khan. Madeline Lechance. Pauline Lechance. Alessandra McGinnity. Maya McGinnity. Leah Rosen. Eva Ryan. Maddie Shamber. And Amelia Shannon. Thank you again, and congratulations. Mr. McCree told me to tell you, you don't have to stay. And I also want to announce that our team is coached by Todd Bailey. We didn't make you a certificate for congratulations. Thank you.
So, first, you sat too far down. Please, the team members, um, drink air for a photo with Coach Akdena and your coach. I know that there are a number that are not here, but maybe this is, this is, that's why. For a question. If we can move aside, we can, just stay here.
Yeah, you can leave unless you want to stay for the meeting by all means, you do.
Thank you, guys, for coming to celebrate.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sitting inside, Todd.
There's still students here, um, perhaps? Andrew, I think, likes to do this, uh. Andrew, oh, yeah, Andrew's here from the, to discuss this, he probably, leaving the tablet field.
Well, um, I assume, for all of you don't remember, if you don't, I presented you a reading June about my, my project. Um, I, you probably know by the, total, that I had recently finished my project. I did have some delays on the start of this project, and I did to do it, finish it before the summer ended, but, um, I began it on, at least September the 2nd, and I finished it over the next two weeks. Oh, I just want to give this chance just to recognize, um, the other community organization members that made this happen. I received, um, $500 donations from both the, um, Sports Row, Cross Cruiser Club, Soccer Cruiser Club, and, um, the New Scotland Soccer Club. I also received donations from, um, Echo Landscaping and, um, Curious Concrete Direction, which both helped me construct the foundations for my projects. Coach Sat, the, um, facilities, and Creative Bunny, great help in the finishing of this project. It's made it a lot smoother than it could have been with other people. I just want to hand out photo of your, if you finished product, um, it's currently at the Saddle It Fields, just across the street. It is, it was finished, uh, probably a third of the way into the soccer season, so it would be enjoyed by modified and JV soccer programs.
And the parents didn't have to break tents.
And, and the parents as well.
This is also posted on a board agenda for everyone in the community to see.
But, um, that project has been, it's been enjoyed by some of the, um, soccer players within our community, and some of the parents as well. I think it's done a good job to provide what I intended, it came out well. Hopefully it should do, stand the test of time for, um, many athletes in the future, and for it should be used next season to do the across birds as well. I assure you, I have a plaque here right now, that I will be putting up onto one of the, to the, one of the shelters in the coming week, just to recognize some of the, um, organizations that need donations to make this possible. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions, now, um, be happy, actually.
I'd just like to thank you for thinking of the district and our school community as a service project. We're greatly appreciative of it, and our community and students, and all in the future get to, like, benefit from your efforts. So, on behalf of the district, for me saying thank you so much.
You feel it too?
I did, yes.
So you pose a team, so.
That's great.
But you didn't make it just a little bit smaller and a little.
A little psych out there.
Great job, that's awesome, thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Feel free to. Alright, uh, so take the whole first word, it's gonna get beat up, students, students, students. Uh, first, I was gonna start off about all the sports, for the policy here. Um, of course, we have the tennis team that won, progress against them. Uh, varsity girls soccer got to semi, semifinals. The boys varsity soccer got their second game sectionals. And for cross country, we have the girls varsity team that got first in colonial council. Boys varsity got second, and boys modified got first. The cross country team is on to sectionals on Saturday, and they are predicted to win states. Uh, the weekend for Halloween, people had their annual temper tree. It was very successful, and there were a lot of kids who came and had fun, and I know, I love seeing all their costumes. Uh, and speaking of costumes, on Halloween, the, uh, a bunch of students and teachers dressed up. Uh, I loved seeing all those too. The fall theme, physics class had their fall theme, so they also dressed up and, uh, went outside to use their catapults that they all built. And then, uh, I'm also about to send out form for grading policies for students to send input on, like, what do you feel like being graded, and things they see that they don't really, really like. Uh, and then, this Friday, if anyone has free time at 7:00 PM, there'd be cabaret, so you should go and watch all of our talented students. And, yeah, thanks a lot. Catapults and chowshits? Well, oh, catapult, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Chowshits. With that, we need to, uh, to have support.
Great. Actually, I want to piggyback on something that Michaela said. First off, I want to apologize. I got a little under the weather, my throat is finally, my voice is finally coming back, but it's, I'm not. It, it might not be as voiceless as typical, so I do apologize for that. So, Michaela mentioned the grading policy and started going after students. As the policy committee has discussed multiple times in public, and we continue to look at it, we are looking at our grading policies. Michaela and I had a conversation, really key for Michaela, the point is, why not get student voice in this, and see what their thoughts are, so when she gets that information, we'll bring it back to the policy committee. So, as we're having this conversation, we're knowing that student voice is a part of it. So, thank you, Michaela, for, as a student board member, advocating for students and bringing their voice in decision making. Appreciate that a lot. It's going in 9/12.
9/12?
Yeah. So, let's start with, um, probably with everybody's mind, which is what we released on October 16th, was the cybercrime incident. So I want to give a brief update regarding the, uh, cybercrime incident that we shared here in the, in the district. Um, at this time, there is no new legal or criminal developments to report. The matter remains an ongoing active investigation, so we can't really share too much of that that's going on. We'll be like that for some time. Um, but we did get some good news today, hence the reason that I'm giving an update. Uh, we've been working with our insurance carriers to make sure that we're going to be able to get refunded some of our funds. Uh, we've been notified today that we'll get another additional $250,000 from our, one of our insurance policies. So we're going to be upwards of $80 at this point, recovered back, which is phenomenal. We just found that out today, so as we continue to look through all of this, um, we just want to make sure that people are aware of it. Uh, we continue to work with law enforcement's insurance partners to ensure that every aspect is, is, um, addressed. And, um, you know, as you all know, we want to make sure that everyone's fully engaged and committed to, you know, returning these funds, as we were victim of a cyber incident. One thing that I've said to the board before, and I will say publicly to everyone, is when I met with every single law enforcement agency that came by me, at the IC here, the, uh, Secret Service, you name them, they were all here, the one thing they said was, this happens more often than you can imagine. And it's very commonplace, and, you know, it's good, but we have all of our processes and policies in place, so hence the reason that we're getting this thing back. So, it's a positive thing today that we found out about the insurance, and we're moving forward. Really, that's all I have to say, um, on that matter. Anything? So, let's talk about, I was gonna mention the food pantry, but I am again, because I think it's important. So thank you, Matt, and thank you, Farji. Um, and one thing I do want to state is that even the students did a PSA on the morning announcements about where they can get snacks and things after school as well. So, we really are trying to make sure that that, everyone is well aware of it. Also, uh, the most recent thing that we shared out there is the other food cantries in the area that are available for community members, and a hotline for snacks as well throughout the county. So, that is that information, that's available. Capital project update. So, first and foremost, we had a transportation ride opening. Thank you, everybody in K. Rubbing cutting is the ultimate enterprise with our tiny little scissors, and our, having candidates use one of them for, like, safety reasons, it was kind of, it was actually hilarious. Uh, so, that is great, and our elementary, um, it was really nice, actually, to have the Halloween parade. It was something that we weren't sure that we were gonna be able to have outside, they did a nice job, they needed to coordinate off. So, um, at the end of this week, the 5th, 6th, and 7th, weather depending, of course, we're gonna have a paving done, um, the back lot, so if you notice, we put in, um, a lot of the drainage, a lot of, like, reclaimed area, it's a much smaller area, if you can tell, that we've had before, or that little, like, parking area and entranceway. Um, all of that will be paved up, up until where the corner goes around to the small gym. So all of that is going to be done hopefully by the end of this week. If not, it'll be next Tuesday. So that is our review for that. Any questions on the outside area?
Which, is that in front of the building, or behind?
Behind the wood.
Behind.
Yeah.
Where the new sidewalks are?
Yes, so the, so if you're going down towards the elementary school, where we used to have the bus, bus parking, right, they grab a lot, that is now, we reclaimed a lot of that to make a green space. We put in new parking, a new, um, sidewalk to go along that area, and there's gonna be a small storage facility there, so we can easily get our salt trucks and everything in and out of that area for, because right now there's nothing. We have no place to store those things, because our transportation facility is gone. So that's why we're putting that little storage shed right there, so we can move our things in and out very easily. The asphalt is gonna go all the way around the building eventually, but right now it's gonna go up until where the small gym entrance is. We never had the ability to have that, it was always just grass, and there was a walkway that goes all the way around, and an asphalt area that goes up to where the, um, playground is. So those are the areas that are all being taken care of.
So it's not going all the way around yet?
Yes, that is correct.
When's that gonna get?
That is gonna get done in the summer of next year, because we still have a lot of work to do around the edge of the building. So that's still an active site, so we're not gonna pave from where the flood retention wall is, all the way to the, where the, um, cover bridge is. We're not gonna do any of that paving or any of that site work yet, because there's still more work to get done. Does that make sense? Just want to clarify, because I know it's, it's hard to visualize, making sure that you understand that. But that should be done by the end of this year, uh, by the end of this week, and early next week. That will end the site work that you're going to see until springtime. So like that outside work of, like, most paving and all that kind of stuff. Doesn't end the work that's happening in the building. In the building, the new music rooms, art rooms, entryway, covered area coming into the building, secure vestibule, uh, offices and all that area, and nurse's office, that is scheduled to be open in February. So all of that, it's actually supposed to, yes, final cleanings in February, like, end of March, so maybe even a little before that. So all of that area, all that opening will be reopened in only a few short months. That will be really nice to see. The transportation facility, which was the cafeteria, which will now be the cafeteria, that's been delayed a couple of months, we're now looking at that one probably being May-June. Um, now with the D E C pushback that we had for a couple of weeks as well, that's pushed it back a little bit even further. Um, so that is going to be a little bit further back, but that is gonna be the only thing that's gonna be inside of the building that needs to get finished. The rest of the work, again, is the stairwell. The stairwell is going to be in summer, because you can't really do that during the school year. And then the remainder of the outside site work will also be in the summer. One thing that came up, that we need to address, and that we're looking at, our allowances and contingency and carryover from the transportation facility, because we did not use all the contingency budget from that, is, um, when we did our water main on the inside of the building, and they're switching it over, it was cast iron from about 50 years ago. Everybody knows about cast iron, it's 50 years old, it can spread out, and it fails. We redid the inside, our concern is the outside of the building from us until the, the town's water supply is cast iron as well. We're concerned with when we open it up and we start digging into it, it's going to be very frail, and it will fail. Um, so, what we're looking at doing is we're actually looking at using our, our contingencies on that budget, and replacing the water main from our building all the way up until the town corner where it was built in, just because even if we wait and if we're able to get time into it, a year or two from now, it's gonna fail. The town redid theirs a few years back, the reason why they redid it, it was failing. So it's a good opportunity for us to take this time in the summertime to be able to make sure that we can do it. Our construction manager is looking at quoting for that, for, um, the site work to get done. The water main is important. It's not something that's super visible for everyone to see, but it's something that for the next 50 years that we take care of, it'll give us peace of mind. Any questions on that? Again, it's an old building, we, we were fighting about the finances. Um, any questions on the construction project itself? Alright, and that, I believe, is all I have. Just an announcement, you mean?
That we moved to the midst of the, um, any questions or comments on that? Second? A second? All there?
Aye.
We have, uh, I have 5.1 financial reports and 5.2 linked auditor reports. Put those, and then we'll take them together, um, and we can discuss them together, if there are any questions or comments. Or would someone like to move, like, 5.1 and 5.2? Second?
What's that?
All there?
Aye.
Personnel items? Any discussion on that, anyone like to move on? Is that it?
A second?
On favor?
Aye.
5.4 and 5.5, CSU information and those two teacher appointments, any discussion or anyone else?
I'll move it.
On favor? We have two M O R's, how the rates and so their literacy. 5.6, 5.7, any questions or would anyone like to discuss, or someone wants to move it?
I'll move it.
Second?
A second?
On favor?
Aye.
5.8, there were two bids for fresh produce. One is potentially being rewarded, if anyone would like to discuss, or would anyone like to move it?
I'll move it.
Second? Second. Pass the rub. On favor?
Aye.
We had an audit committee meeting about hour 15 minutes ago. Sorry?
Sure, so, we received the report from our external auditors. That's required to be done annually. I'll give you the highlights. We had a lengthy discussion in the audit committee meeting, so if anyone is interested, their recording will be posted and you can watch it. The audit of the financial statements was conducted. The opinion on those was unmodified, which is the highest rating that we external auditors can give for financial statements. They did identify one material weakness that related to closing procedures for how our financial statements get closed out at the end of the year. That finding was made due to a number of adjustments that were required to be made in terms of moving money between funds to properly close out the year. So, the auditors had to take some time to make those adjustments during the audit, and that led to the finding regarding closing procedures for the financial statements. There were no significant deficiencies reported. There was no material non-compliance identified or included. As part of the audit, they also reviewed our extra classroom financial statements. That's for clubs and other programs where they collect funds and then retain this for club purposes. That was also unmodified. There was a note in the report about elementary school funds, and the way that we are accounting for elementary school funds is inconsistent with New York State Ed regulations. However, upon questioning our external auditor, he said that there's really no better way than what we're doing, so we're pretty comfortable with that. There was a notation in the report that it's inconsistent. As far as financial highlights, we ended our general fund with a balance of 8.2 million in our fund balance. We have appropriated to 2026 a amount of 1.181 million. And our unsigned fund balance is 398,000, which is within the 4% limits that the state comptroller requires school districts to be within. So, all in all, we have some things to work on in terms of closing procedures, but unmodified report. And we also went through our regular agenda, I guess, school lunch fund and our spending, our conferences. What else? Our claim auditor reports, thank you. The aid, we also talked about expense based aids as part of the budgeting process, trying to plan so that we maximize our aid for the football.
Is there anything that we want to bring up now for future audit meetings?
Yeah, if there's other, if there's other topics or issues, that we're passing along, Frank could call me tonight, or we talk through some topics for future meetings that we want to address.
Thank you. Without we go to Prilum?
We have not met since the last board meeting. We are meeting next week, Wednesday, November 5th.
Facilities.
So, Frank went over pretty close to all of it, because I assume that this is fine by me. The only thing to add on, I think, if I'm not misremembering, was we did start having some conversations, early conversations, about future capital projects. And future, uh, that's stupid, but, um, future capital project, what that might entail, not specific yet, but timelines, if you've got that one. For, you know, financials and certain, yeah. Some ideas for what we want to do. It is, my right, yeah. Frank already said, which was the, the bulk.
Can I ask on that topic, do we have any place to solicit?
Yeah, I don't think we're at that point yet, though, of where we can be able to do that. We, we really do, we do the building condition survey, we need to look at our debt services, we need to see the timeline, exactly when we can go out for it. I'm going to say probably within the next six months to a year, will be at the point where we'll be able to solicit community. My concern is going to be, I'm sorry, is what people want to do and what we have to do. Roofs can be very, very expensive, and, you know, if we have to spend three to five million dollars on a roof in comparison to anything else that we have to do, that is going to really kind of stop some of the other things that we want to finish. So, that's why I want to do that building condition survey as well before we do that, because I don't want people to say, we want to do all this and then come back and say, well, we need to do X, Y, Z. Right, we, yeah, exactly, because those are going to be important. So, I'm looking at probably six months to a year, based off the last conversation that we had, before we can get some community. But it still hits our timeline that we talked about at our last two, four meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still there.
Thank you.
Still shooting for that big, as our.
Do we have anything that we want to create? Was that discussing?
Yeah.
Matt?
Howard? So, the same thing, we just have one policy on, that is 1900.
We're going to take it off.
Yeah, I would like to actually table it tonight. Kathy, I want to thank her. She read something on it that we all missed. It said that we had site based teams, we no longer have site based teams. So, I'd like to go back to the committee, to the admin, and just make sure that everything on it is specifically what our new practices are. We have building leadership teams, but we don't have, Kathy gets the gold star for tonight, that we don't have site based committees anymore. We missed that little oversight, so I want to just make sure that it's absolutely 100% correct and bring it back next week.
Why don't you take that back?
Sorry about that.
You started the conversation.
We did, yes. Last meeting, we discussed, we started the discussion on policies 47 and 10. The 47 quo, which are respectively grading systems and student drivers and close to parents. We're wanting to take the time that these issues deserve, started the discussion. We will do the discussion with stakeholders, which are larger than we, and we get a feedback from the students. And then eventually, we will, we will, if the plan now is around December, is, I'm not sure what I did, sometimes policies may be brought back to, or in December, we can move that to forward to discuss and, of course, we're going to have a discussion and get any feedback on it. It, it, what I'll say is, it's, we're taking an eye, we're, we're, we're going to look at these policies with an eye toward most certainly between the professional and the veteran, or educators, doing the job that you trust them to do in the classroom, while also kind of closing guardrails, if you think that's a reward. You have the requirements that seem to work well, we can look at some other districts, yeah. That's important that I have that discussion, whether or not they have, that's your, your policy here. So, what do we need next?
November 13.
It's Thursday.
November 13.
There we go. We just took a check and make sure, because I already had to, I already had to put credit on it. Yes, I have it, I have new 13, so that's all I have.
Awesome. All right, any questions or comments for, for help, thank you. Oh, for, how we can do it for the small people who are working. With that, we have item 7.1. We have a donation from the PTA for the A-Force Field Trip. And also from Quonass for the Builders Club, and also donation for the purchase of the voting machine. There's a sentence in it that I say that we bought, what is it, we bought, is it, we bought a voting machine?
Will we take that?
Yes, please, let's discuss why we bought a voting machine.
Albany County Board of Elections notified us last year that the board was there.
Which they've done before, this is.
No, this is, well, let me, yeah, so let me see. Albany County Board of Elections last year notified us that they will no longer be supporting Albany County schools in the votes, budget votes anymore. They have reasons why they were no longer doing so, and we were looking into it, seeing if that would change or not. Over a period of conversations through our district superintendent, who is at Capitol Radio Voces, who will kind of lead that away, Albany County is still not supporting school districts any longer due to different reasons that they have, and different circumstances that they're dealing with. So, now the burden of school budget votes is now on school districts. So, we do have to fund and buy a voting machine. Now, I did put in a couple of grants, and I still am looking for grants. We did get a grant denied recently that we put in for with a couple of other school districts. And unfortunately, that's too bad, but it happens when you put in grants. We did put in another grant, which we got this. We are looking at purchasing this through Voces. Earlier when I said expense based aids, this is what I'm talking about. You have to purchase, Voces had a co-servant that they're utilizing for other school districts for us to purchase. Now, here comes the sticker shop. It's roughly $17,000 for one voting machine.
Hence, all school districts are legally required to vote on the very same day, so you can't just buy one for a voting machine.
And we can't share, right? So, we're all kind of in the same boat, trying to figure out, hence the reason some school districts work together to do grants. That's why we're working through Voces, so we can at least get aid back on these. And this is why I'm also looking for grants, because of the fact that, you know, this is a large taxpayer cost that we have to do. So, when you say, why are we buying the voting machine, this is why, we have to do it, so. Can I just clarify that quickly in a nutshell?
Thank you. Albany Board of Elections, and thank you for helping us, which is the necessary.
And Jessica is really helping spearhead this with other board folks and looking into it, so thank you to Jessica for her work in making sure that we're adhering to what we have to do.
I think it's also because when we're doing all the mail-in ballots, and remember, there was like these video feed of like 12 hours of ballots announcing? Sort of like, people were bringing out your paper ballots.
Let's never go back to that.
Yeah, 12 hours, which is okay, appreciate everyone's votes, but that's a lot of votes.
So, with that, any conversation about donations, sorry?
I would like to think of Orangeville PTA for that donation for the A-Force Field Trip, because I know that the current 11 graders haven't really gone on a field trip since they were in fourth grade, Fort William Henry. So, it was much appreciated by the current 11 graders to be going.
That sounded like a very good time, too, from what I heard. The principal, the principal of the class.
Yes, yes.
With that, would anyone like to move it?
I will move it.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great gratitude to Quonass PTA and Community Foundation for their capital region. Thank you very much. With that, we now have to fill out the expenditure of the donation for the first voting machine. Would anyone like to discuss it or something?
Move it.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we have two more, item 7.3 and 7.4, the cashing trust agreement and the independent audit report. Is everyone comfortable taking those together? Any discussion in either? Or either? Would anyone like to?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thanks, and thank you to all folks who made that audit happen, and nice that it's. Would you go, we are skipping over item 7.5, as mentioned earlier. Thank you Kathy for recognizing and need to, it's not the voting system. It is though, because they're the great companies. But completely understandable why it is. With that, we come to the second opportunity for the board to hear. Anyone who'd like to come forward, their rapport, and welcome their input or statement. Wanting to come forward, please, just state your name and.
My name is Bob Hayesen. That's my wife, Alicia. I love you guys. Just to go back to what Mr. McCreed was talking about, facilities and the construction going on at Albany Elementary School. I'm a lineman, so I noticed these things, it's a really bad mean hole that goes toward the fire, the wires go toward the firehouse. That like some, had actually been good with that, while the construction's going on. I just thought about that while you were talking about it earlier. But another reason that I wanted to stand up and just, something's been on my, on my mind and on my heart, you know, for the past year or so. And that's, we talked about six months of the year with being able to get into some of these things. But, maybe an updated weight room? My kids are in school and they're getting older, so we're, they're trying to use the weight room more and the kids want to work out together. With the weight room the way it is, they have to go outside and pay these big gym memberships. Really, they want to be working as a team, working out together as a team. So, that's more of a, of a want, more than a need, like you discussed earlier in St. Creed. But I just wanted to, I figured this was the best policy or so, I was going to come up and say something about it, and I figured it's the best situation to do it.
Appreciate your input, thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, we have the second opportunity for the board to hear.
I'll echo Bob Hayesen's comments, and just add, you know, my oldest son really got into weightlifting at his school. And we had, he had the opportunity to have a strength training as a substitute student. And for him, it really helped him with discipline and goal setting. It seemed kind of trivial, but it like he even wrote a column, Jessica, about how he felt that it had helped kind of like shape him and give him the opportunity to like set goals and achieve them and gain confidence. So, I know it seems like a minor thing, but I think a lot of kids would appreciate that same opportunity, so. As we get to that planning stage, I think there's going to be a lot of like wants, but there's also, you know, educational benefits that I do love to them.
The end of the process, right, seems like something that the gym rats in my household, so.
I do have grant services looking for grants for weight room equipment as part of our grant priority that I look for each year. So, there is always a possibility out there that we could do that as well, prior to capital project.
Is there a way to do a community partnership with, with, I find? Is there a way to do a community partnership with, with I run?
I run.
I run. But at least that's local. Because that's a student membership, like, there are some student membership grades that are available, um, that are.
Yeah.
I'd be willing to, uh, kind of just step out and, and look for fundraising and sponsors too. I know the union I'm a part of is usually pretty helpful with schools and fundraising type things, events.
I can.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Congratulations again to all the teams that have been, you know, successful. Anything else? With that, we have dates to remember. Uh, tomorrow is election day, so that is a date to remember. And our next regular board meeting is scheduled for December first, which is just less than a month away. Um, anything else? Like, with that, uh, we're ready to adjourn, would you like to move it?
I'll move it.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
I'll reach out to you. Okay.